So this is the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 6, 2018. If everybody will stand for the applause of the Regents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the second item on the agenda is Audience Comments Not on the Agenda, but seeing no Audience Members, we're going to move on to number three, Business Items. A, Public Hearing and Recommendations: Accessory Dwelling Unit Code. Do you want me to open the public hearing? Or how do you want me to do it?
Sure, I'll give a brief introduction, then you can open the public hearing and close it, and then we'll deliberate.
Okay.
So, as we discussed at our previous January and February meetings of this year, we have developed a draft accessory dwelling unit code. And as was described previously, our comprehensive plan identifies numerous goals and policies related to the diversity in the supply of housing types and to provide for infill development within the city. And so, the city's existing code does allow accessory dwelling units, but it doesn't clearly identify the standards except for a footnote that references that one of the two units must be owner-occupied. And so, we were seeking to clarify the accessory dwelling unit permitting process and the standards for when they can and cannot be used. And so, we developed a code, and as I mentioned, we previously presented this to you. I will say that Mr. Ternary called today and had some questions about this, and I think not to be outdone by Mr. Bernstein from last week. He did a very thorough job of reviewing this code, and he pointed out a typo on page three. There was a missing, the word "be," where it said "such an agreement," and notice "shall be approved" by the Planning Director. And then, that was just a minor change. And then on page seven, we've handed out a redline copy, and he made what I thought were some good suggestions to make it easier, not harder, to build ADUs. And they really talked about the pedestrian connectivity from the ADU to the street and the parking area, and also kind of not getting into micromanaging what materials the walking surfaces are made out of, and just stating that we need that walking path, not that if your driveway is concrete, your path has to be asphalt or vice versa. So, we are recommending the changes that Mr. Ternary has proposed, and I don't know if Mr. Ternary wants to describe them any further. The other thing that would go along with this ordinance is we'd be removing the footnotes from the land use tables and then replacing them with a reference to this new ADU chapter, which is a standalone chapter. So with that said, I think we should take public testimony, and then if you have questions or want to discuss it, you can do that after the hearing has been closed.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. We see no Audience Members, so I will close the public hearing.
So I think if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or you can -- the next step would be to make a motion to recommend that the City Council approve the ordinance for the ADU code as amended by Mr. Ternary.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as it's been amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to B, Public Hearing and Recommendation for Title 20, Housekeeping Amendment and Repeal of the Title 17.
Once again, this is a subject that is familiar to the Planning Commission from the January and February meetings. This is basically a moderate cleanup of things that were in Title 20, which was passed last June. Things that were omissions, or errors, or things that have been updated in state law, and so we've tried to update our code to keep them moving forward in concert. One of the other things that we did was the repeal of the existing mobile home code as it is no longer needed. It's redundant to what we've adopted in Title 20. So that was something we should have actually done when Title 20 was adopted, but no one noticed it. So we've noticed it now, and we're doing it. This is basically just a cleanup. There's no substantive changes to Title 20. It's basically just trying to clean up the things that co-publishing pointed out to us when they were putting our code online. So again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to go through that.
So at this time, I'd open up the public hearing. We see no Audience Members, we'll close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just want to give a shout-out to the staff, because this is a lot, a lot of cleanup and administrative work, so.
It looks phenomenal to me.
A lot of people read through it and gave us their comments, so we appreciated it.
Housekeeping Amendment, I imagine you'll see one of these every six months for the next year or two, as we continue to discover little corrections that are needed.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt the ordinances, accepting minor corrections and revisions to Title 20 POMC and repealing Title 17 POMC as presented.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, moving on to C, Introduction, the 2018 Preliminary Comprehensive Plan Amendment Agenda.
Yes, so this is just being brought to you as a heads-up in advance of our April and May meetings, when you're going to be talking about these issues. We had a comprehensive plan application deadline in January for a submission of proposed amendments. The City Council has initiated a few amendments, as well as we've received one amendment application from a private citizen seeking land use map changes. And so, I think the text amendments are fairly self-explanatory, and more information on those will be presented at a subsequent meeting. But in terms of the map amendments, we wanted to bring those to your attention in case, between now and then, you want to drive by, look at the sites, and consider whether you think that these areas should or should not be changed. The areas that are included, there is the Crawford Road area, which is a street off of Bethel near Salmonberry, and we have had a whole lot of code enforcement issues out here. One of the problems is that these are all single-family homes on a private, single-family road, and as a result, they're all non-conforming uses, and nobody is putting money into their house to keep things up. And as a result, it's not a very pleasant place. By rezoning this to single-family now, while there is no demand for commercial property, and more specifically, commercial property that would have to be aggregated into one larger tract for development, we think that that's probably a better plan for the 20-year comprehensive plan, to keep that a single-family, and hopefully encourage people to maybe make some improvements to these houses and get things looking a little bit nicer. The other city-initiated amendment is an area along Old Clifton Road, just up the hill from the industrial park. And you can see a map there that shows the purple -- everything in purple is zoned industrial or employment currently. But the problem here is that there's a creek that bisects the big purple area, and the area on the east side of the creek, which is along Old Clifton Road, does not have access from inside of the industrial park, and so that would mean industrial development right out on Old Clifton. We think that maybe a better zone for that area, given the cost of making access improvement and frontage improvements, would be a multifamily designation. It's near the highway on-ramps, it's potentially near some Kitsap Transit Service, and possibly a future park-and-ride facility. And because it's bisected by the creek, it really, I think, would have a better curb appeal for the city than if it were developed industrially. The back half of that property on the west side of the creek, we propose to leave industrial because there's the opportunity to come through the city-owned property from the industrial park and actually access that from the industrial park. And so we figured the other side of the ravine could be industrial. And that's the other thing, is the creek is in a pretty deep ravine. You would have to build a bridge across it in order to connect the two sides. So, we think this is a reasonable proposal. Finally, we received an application.
Oh, excuse me.
Could you just refresh my memory? What does CS stands for?
Community Facility.
Facility.
That's the -- there's a water tank up there. The city has, I think, our shooting range for the cops, the water tower, there's a stormwater dumping facility for the vector truck, where we let all the liquids settle or evaporate out, and.
Okay, so we're talking about the purple triangle north of the blue swath on the east side of Old Clifton?
Yes, correct. And then specifically, the crosshatched area within that.
And you're proposing R-20?
We're proposing R -- well, we're proposing residential high-density in the comp plan. The corresponding zone would be R-20. But that assumes that our fourth item on the agenda, which is talking about zoning revisions, doesn't happen sooner, in which case, we might apply something other than R-20 in the future.
Okay.
The final amendment that we received is, it's adjacent to the Overlook Apartments that are under construction, and that's up behind the movie theater, kind of off of Orlando, right on the city boundary. And so, right now, there are 38 apartments just to the, I guess it would be the west of the flag-shaped blue line. And so, this owner is already developing 38 apartments on the bottom of the hill. They would like to also be able to put apartments at the top of the hill, where there's some considerable views. These all, this area is entirely accessed from roads in Kitsap County. You would either have to come off of Horseman, and Russell, and Whittier, one of those streets up there, to get into this area. And so, obviously, any development of this site is certainly going to require upgrades to that road infrastructure. But in terms of a zoning proposal, you know, there are considerable slopes that are undevelopable, and so this would all be up on the higher part of the property. And, you know, I don't think we have a strong recommendation one way or another, but it's -- we've received that application. So I would just encourage you to look on Google Maps at these properties, and maybe drive by these areas and check things out for yourselves. And we'll probably have a hearing in April or May, depending on what happens with the City Council at their next meeting in terms of adopting the 2018 docket.
This last one that you were just speaking to, these would be the parcels that were, like, east of where we did our site visit?
Yeah, I think we walked around out there, didn't we?
Yeah.
So we walked around the area that was going to be the 38 apartments, and so this would be on top of the hill above that.
Okay.
So would it block the view of those houses that are there?
I don't think there's a lot of views up there, actually. I think this is a pretty good view property, but the view properties are to the sides of this one, but once you go back from the top of the hill, there's not as much of a view.
Okay.
So any other questions on that, or are you ready to move on?
Do you guys have questions? On to the introduction of the zoning code update.
All right, so fortunately, I got a little bit of practice with this presentation. And actually, can you hit the lights for me? I got some practice at the Land Use Committee on Monday, and introduced this to some of the council members who are supportive of us considering this approach to overhauling our zoning code. And so, as you remember, we adopted Title 20, which was dealing with permit processing, we dealt with stormwater critical areas, those sorts of issues. We then moved on to the architectural design standards in terms of what the aesthetic quality of the buildings that we're looking to see constructed in Port Orchard would look like. And then, the last step in this whole process is really overhauling our individual zones, our lot coverage, density, setback requirements, all the qualitative aspects of our zoning code that we haven't touched yet. And so, we started down the path of trying to update our existing code last year, and then, early this year, we were made aware of a really neat model code that was developed by Housing and Urban Development, the U.S. agency. It was developed for the Teton Valley area of Idaho, so right on the west side of Yellowstone in Idaho. There's two towns there and a county. And so they developed what's called a model-based, or a form-based code, and it's dedicated to public use so that other cities and agencies can consider using that as a framework for their own zoning. And I think it's a really interesting code. So I wanted to give you a presentation, just kind of outlining how a model-based code, or a form-based code and our current zoning code are structured, to illustrate the benefits of moving in that, of possibly moving in that direction. So the, our zoning code is in Title 20. There's the land use tables in 20.46. There's the setback, common development standards, in 20.122. And really, our code is focused on land use and what uses are allowed, rather than what building a zoning code that accommodates specific building forms. We want to update our code to be easier to read, more user-friendly, and to really accommodate, as we talked about with the ADU chapter, accommodate all these alternative housing types, and make sure that it's not tailored to one particular type of building. And I want to use the R-8 zone in Port Orchard as an example to illustrate how we have some issues with our existing code. The R-8 zone is a maximum density of eight units per acre, and it's a minimum lot size of 5,445 square feet. The building height is 33 feet. Setbacks are 15 feet front, five side, 10 rear, and you can cover up to 75 percent of a lot with impervious surface. Interestingly, though, our R-8 zone in the use tables allows for single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, that would include things like duplexes and town homes. It allows accessory dwelling units, home businesses, assisted living centers, daycare facilities, schools, libraries, museums, parks and trails, and utilities. And it's the biggest zone by area in the city. And so, what we've noticed is that our R-8 zone works really well for producing single-family neighborhoods, but it's not well-suited for the other housing types that are allowed in the zone. And so with a lot size that is a one-size-fits-all, 5,445 square feet, why would any developer build a townhome on a 5,000-square-foot lot when they can build a four-bedroom house on that same lot? It's, you know, a townhome, I guess a 5,445-square-foot lot is, you know, 54 by 100, and you're not going to have a townhome that's 54 feet wide, or most people that want a townhome probably don't want a yard that's going to be quite that large. In thinking about other building forms, a house served by an alley probably requires a lot less land than a house with a front-load garage, or even a three-car garage. And would you really want a duplex on a 5,445-square-foot lot, or even an assisted living facility? Really, we need to tailor our minimum lot sizes for the proposed building type, rather than having a one-size-fits-all minimum lot size. Likewise, we have one height limit. All buildings in the R-8 zone can be 33 feet. That would include your primary house, your detached garage, your ADU. If somebody wanted to build a shop to park their RV in it, and it, you know, it's in their backyard and it's casting a shadow on a neighbor, we probably need different height limits for accessory structures that are different than the primary structure on a lot. We've done some analysis of our current permit activity, as well as what's currently on the market in terms of real estate. Currently, we have 50 single-family detached houses under construction, and 38 apartments, which are at the Overlook project that we discussed earlier. And so, the Overlook apartments are for rent, they're not for sale, but the 50 single-family detached houses are presumably being offered for sale. And the average square footage of these houses is 3,400 square feet. So enormous houses under construction. I think that with the lot size that we have, I mean, if you think about, what is 75 percent of 5,400 square feet? That's, you know, that would be a 3,000-square-foot, one-story house. And when you start going up, I mean, you're getting really big houses because you have really big lot sizes, and they're trying to maximize the yield of the property. And what incentive would a developer have to build a smaller house if the lot size has to be 5,400 square feet? You don't really see any two-bedroom houses being built anymore. So we looked at the MLS and found 119 homes for sale in Port Orchard as of last week. They were all single-family detached houses. There's no townhomes, duplex, or cottages, or condos available. And of the homes that are for sale, there's three houses with one bedroom, six with two bedrooms, 65 with three, and 39 with four, and then eight with five or more bedrooms. So the majority are three- and four-bedroom houses that are being constructed. And the smallest house for sale that has been constructed since 2013, so within the last five years, is 2,200 square feet, and it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom house. The majority of the houses that were on the market are four-bedroom and approximately 3,000-square-foot houses.
Can I ask a question about, not this necessarily, but when they talk about homes for sale, when they say 119, is that homes for sale, or is that refinances too?
No, that's actively listed.
Okay.
And then, Nick, is 2013 a significant year? Did something change in 2013, and that's why you used that?
I just wanted to go back, kind of in the post-recession. Building really started to pick up again in 2013, and so it's about five years ago. It's also when I showed up in Port Orchard, and so I've seen what's happened in the last five years in terms of a trend.
Okay.
And can speak to that. But before that, obviously, we have data, but the recession really kind of skews things a little bit, I think.
Right.
And so, the new construction houses that you were saying were 3,400 square feet plus, these 119, did you have an average on what the average size of the houses were?
The MLS data doesn't really let you sort it that way. You can arrange it from smallest to largest, but you can't actually pull it into a table and average it. So we could have manually entered a lot of data to figure it out.
I entered on 119 and divide by 119.
Yeah. So, when we went on the urban design tour, which I think Mark and David, were you both on the tour that we took of Seattle? Did anyone else go on? Mark was there.
I didn't make it.
I wanted to, but I was on the east coast.
So we took a tour of a couple of different areas, and I wanted to pull some examples from that tour that at least a good chunk of the City Council has seen, and what Mark has seen. And the first example that I have is a house in Mill Creek that was built near their town center. And it's the house on the right here, which is a 3,049-square-foot lot. It's 1,589 square feet of house, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, a single-car garage, and one parking space in front of the garage. And the one characteristic about this neighborhood is that there's extensive landscaping. And so, the neat thing about this example is that a house with a one-car garage versus a house with a two-car garage, I think, looks radically different on a 3,000-square-foot lot. And you'll, you know, if you go into some of the newer developments on the east side of Port Orchard in the county, like off of Phillips Road at Sedgwick, I think there's some pretty large houses there. And even out at the ridge, there's some houses that are on pretty small 3,000, 3,500-square-foot lots, that are a lot less attractive than this because they're a massive house on a small lot. So I think this is a great example of maybe identifying a building form that is a single-family detached house with a one-car garage, and establishing height and lot width standards for that particular use that are maybe a little bit less than a larger house. Another example, this one is actually an affordable housing unit in the High Point area of West Seattle. The house on the corner there, it's an 1,820-square-foot lot. It's a 1,240-square-foot house with three bedrooms, one-and-a-half baths. Again, it's extensive landscaping, and this one doesn't even actually have a garage. It just has a parking, or a driveway alongside the house, that's a single-lane driveway. But it's a reasonably attractive house on a fairly small lot, and as a result, it's also an affordable unit, in part because it's part of a federally funded mixed-income housing development. Also in that same development, this is a market-rate house at 3,420-square-foot lot. It's a corner lot. It has a one-car alley-loaded garage. It's an 1,800-square-foot house, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths. But it shows that you can have a really attractive house on, you know, a 3,400-square-foot lot, but if you could imagine that house having a two-car garage off of the front of it, on a lot that size, it would probably be pretty unattractive.
And I think in large part, it's attractive because it's a corner lot.
Yeah.
I mean, if you took a picture of the next house standing.
Well, it has a nice big front porch across the entire front of the building.
I'm just wondering if the next house over would look as attractive?
We can look at that. I'll pull it up on Street View.
Thank you.
The last example from High Point, this is actually a townhome project in High Point. And again, it's a one-car alley-loaded garage, but this is a 1,000-square-foot lot, a 1,073. So it's zero lot line, but you've got a 1,300-square-foot house with two bedrooms and two-and-a-half baths on, you know, a really small lot. And I think it shows that a townhome, I mean, putting a townhome on a 3,000 or a 4,000-square-foot lot really doesn't make sense unless you're going to have a sprawling two-car garage next to the house, or not as part of it. And so, the alternative to our conventional zone, as I mentioned, is a form-based code, which really focuses on standards that create desirable and compatible buildings within a specific area, with more emphasis on mass and scale, and less emphasis on use. And so this example, as I mentioned, HUD prepared it for Teton Valley, Idaho, and we're going to look at their RS3 zone, which is the most comparable to our R-8 zone. And the RS3 zone is, they describe what the purpose of it is. It says it's a detached house with a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet. Additional building types that are allowed include a backyard cottage, which is an ADU that we, kind of like what we talked about earlier tonight, a cottage court, a townhomes, and the R3 zone should be applied in areas where the predominant land use is single or two-family, and it has water and sewer service. That's language from Idaho, where they have a lot more septic systems. And so the RS3 zone is set up so that each different building form has a different minimum lot size and minimum lot width. So a detached house has to have a 3,000-square-foot minimum lot size with a 30-foot width. The backyard cottage is the same. A cottage court is 1,200 square feet per housing unit. And then duplexes require 5,000 square feet, and attached house, like a townhome, is 2,500 square feet. And lots that are 40 feet or less in width are required to have their vehicular access from the alley. So in order to even get the minimum lot size, you have to have an alley-loaded garage versus a front-loaded garage. The, they then get into setbacks, which really aren't different from ours, except that accessory structures have different setbacks than the primary structure. So basically, your detached garage, or your shed, or your shop, has a 40-foot primary street setback, meaning it has to be in the backyard behind the house, or at least far enough behind the front wall of the house, that it isn't highly visible. And then it has lesser side and rear setbacks due to the nature of the building as accessory rather than a primary house. Building height, again, they have three stories for the principal building, 24 feet for the accessory building, and you could further break that down if you wanted to treat a shed differently than a garage, that's differently than a workshop. So that was an example of the zone, and then they have specific standards to the building type. And so this is their standard for a single-family detached house, which is defined as a building that accommodates one dwelling unit on an individual lot with yards on all side. And then they have a lot placement table, which for single-family houses, everything, all the setbacks in lot areas are set in the zoning district. Some specific buildings have alternative setbacks. The building heights are the same as the zoning district, and then they have references to how it allows for porches to project into the front yard, and where parking has to be located within the lot. Another building type that we mentioned was cottage housing, and this is a building type that accommodates five to nine detached dwelling units organized around a shared internal courtyard. And so this has actually a half-acre minimum site area, so the entire cottage development has to be on at least a half an acre. But the individual lot on which the building sits only has to be 1,200 square feet. So you would actually subdivide the cottage housing development, where you would have the common area that would be your central courtyard, your parking areas, but then the building envelope could be subdivided as a fee-simple lot, where the person only owns the area immediately around their house, and then has common ownership of everything else. It also has minimum dimensions for the courtyard, 3,000-square-foot courtyard area with 40 feet of minimum width. And then, every unit beyond five units requires an additional 600 square feet of courtyard area. It also has lesser building heights for these building types to emphasize the cottage aspect of their design. Then they get into a fourplex, which in the R3 zone, or I'm sorry, in our R8 zone, fourplexes aren't allowed, but in the R12 zone, they are allowed. But our minimum lot size in the R12 zone is, I think, 3,400 square feet. But for a fourplex, you typically want about 7,000. But for a fourplex, you typically want about seven thousand square feet for, for a fourplex, which really doesn't equate to the twelve units per acre that are allowed in, in the R twelve zone. And so really you want, once you're stacking units on top of each other, you really have to look at the, the lot size relative to the likely building footprint rather than just an arbitrary density number that's based on producing single family houses. And so here again, it's a three story building. You can have an accessory structure up to twenty-four feet. There's minimum transparency requirements for the amount of windows that you provide and some other standards that are listed here. And then moving on to townhomes, which is a building type that accommodates three or more dwelling units where each unit is separated vertically by a common sidewall. Units cannot be vertically mixed. And so a fourplex, you can actually have two and two where a unit is stacked on top of one another. The, the townhouses, they have to, you know, floor to ceiling is all one unit, but they can share common walls. And so this says that you have to have at least five thousand square feet to build a town home project that can include multiple units. The minimum lot size for each unit is fifteen hundred. So, so a, a three unit town home building actually requires five thousand square feet, even though the minimum lot size is fifteen hundred. But once you go to a four unit town home, it becomes a six thousand square foot minimum and for the, for the side area. And again, right now we have, we allow townhomes in our R eight zone, but based on the minimum lot sizes, nobody would ever build one. And so I think this is just kind of a sampling of what the model code that we're looking to utilize looks like. But we wanted to introduce it to you and also tell you if you wanted to, if you want to read about it, you can Google the Teton Valley Model Code and you can actually open all of these files and take a look at them. But we believe it's a, a really good example to, to base a zoning code update for Port Orchard on. I don't know that we need a whole lot of input yet unless you're totally opposed to us working on this anymore. But as long as you're comfortable moving forward with it, we're going to continue putting together some draft documents so that we can hopefully bring this forward in the coming months and initiate a public outreach process. And I'm going to go, since I've got you here, we'll go look at that, that High Point example and go on Street View. Did it, did anyone have any other questions?
Can you give me that website?
Just Google Teton Valley Model Code. And I can have Carrie send a link out to everyone.
So the intention is to have developers be encouraged, financially somehow encouraged that they're going to create more types of housing rather than thirty-four hundred square foot homes?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's, rather than even encouraging them, it's not discouraging them from, from building housing types that are currently allowed through standards that are clearly tailored to prefer one housing type. And it, it's really about a diversity in housing type and housing affordability and giving somebody who's, you know, an empty nester the opportunity to downsize, which currently there isn't an opportunity to buy something like that in Port Orchard. You'd have to find a lot and, and build it. And you'd be building something that would not be the highest and best use of the land because of, of the minimum lot size that's required.
Right.
So with the, on the R eight, would it, would it still have the, the, what was it, number fifty-four? Fifty-four hundred? What was that number?
It could have that for single family uses, but what I would actually propose is that for houses with an alley load garage, we have a minimum lot size. For houses with a one car garage, we have a different minimum lot size that would, in lot width specifically, because when you have a one car garage in a driveway, you need ten feet for the driveway width. You need, you know, eighteen feet to be able to park a car on the street in front of the house. And then you need, you know, potentially a little bit of setback on the other side of the driveway. So realistically, a one, a house with a one car garage needs to be about thirty-two or thirty-four feet wide. The depth isn't as important, other than for requiring a minimum yard size. And then once you have a two car garage, you need to go a little bit wider and a three car garage even wider than that. And so I would, I would look at minimum lot sizes from the standpoint of the housing form that is proposed more so than the number of units per acre that you're trying to achieve.
But I guess what I'm asking, is that number going to go away if we adopt this?
Yes, that, that number would go away.
Fifty-four hundred number would go away.
Yeah. So there's your other High Point examples of the, the other houses that are on that street. A little bit better picture than what I took.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Has anybody ever visited the High Point area prior to this upgrade? I mean, I know you have.
Well, you mean prior to the development going in? I mean, when it was World War Two housing that was converted to low income housing?
It's, it's very, very nice in comparison to what it was prior to this, to this governmental subsidy and upgrade. I will say that. Based, if we were to look at something like this, like this, a form based code, down the road, big picture, are we talking about having specific areas within the city limits that would be allowed to do specific types of products? But for example, the fourplex, I can't see that going out into McCormick Woods area.
No, and, and, well, I will say that McCormick North is one of our local centers where they hope to build kind of a, an urban village. And so the possibility of having some higher density things out there as a local center is, is a very real possibility. But I think that most of your existing single family neighborhoods would get the lowest residential designation, which is for residential, single family, so that they don't change. But that for new areas, you maybe give it the next step up in zoning, which allows for kind of the mix of townhomes and single family so that, you know, they look to maximize the site. They look at their constraints. They may have an area that, that says, wow, we could really squeeze some extra lots in here, but they're not going to be very deep. Maybe it would be better to put townhomes along this block and do the rest of it as single family or, you know, there, there's all, all kinds of different things that you can do. And I think what we want to, what we want to do is be flexible and get good design outcomes more so than just trying to, to control things and limit them to, to single family development. And, you know, McCormick Woods is already totally vested under development agreements for McCormick Woods, McCormick West, McCormick North, which they may revisit that on McCormick North and resubmit a new application. But for McCormick Woods and West, I think they're going to build, what they're going to build regardless of any zoning changes that we make.
About forty-nine hundred and ninety-eight square foot houses.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So Nick, did you, do you know if Teton Valley saw like a, a positive reaction to this from the developers?
You know, it's so new. The, the code that's online right, online right now was the draft code that was delivered to Teton Valley. If they've adopted it, it's only been a year and a half.
Okay.
And so it's, it's very new and I don't know a whole lot about how the implementation has gone. All I know is, is that when I flip through this and read it, it's, it's really easy to navigate. And of course, we don't have a graphic designer on staff and our code publishing company can't probably do quite as nice a job as what they've put together here. But I think we can borrow a lot of the, the visual elements of this and using pictures to show what we want rather than words is, is a really good way to go to illustrate, you know, illustrate these different requirements and, and standards.
Be curious to see what kind of interest they've had at what levels from contractors.
Yeah, I mean, well, T, I mean, the, the statistics on this county, it's, it's two cities and a county. And the, the bigger city is four thousand people. The smaller one is two thousand. They have a bit of tourism related to the national parks. But they're still, you know, they're forty-five minutes from Jackson across a mountain pass. And so this is still a very rural area. There's all kinds of agricultural standards about slaughterhouses and other things that are rural uses that are, they really spent a lot of time on, that I don't really think we probably need to get into in Port Orchard because we don't have hog farms or, or chicken farms or anything like that. So, but the small town, I think the small town standards are really, really good. And I can actually, um.
Do you have a picture of their town?
I can pull it up.
While you're pulling it up, do you think that this would incline the construction to be lots of little lots versus a mix of big and little?
No, I, I think it'll be a mix. I mean,
Which is going to be the bigger bang for the buck for the builders? I mean, they're going to, if they can make more money selling a hundred in a block versus twenty houses in a block, what's preventing them from just to jam a hundred houses into that area and, and make up basically blanketing the area with lots of little tight dwellings?
I don't know. I think the margins on the types of houses that are being built at McCormick Woods right now are, are probably pretty high. And people seem to be, you know, snapping those up. I don't know if, if it, if you guys have not been out on a Saturday to McCormick Woods and taken a tour of one of their new houses, I would, I would really recommend taking a look. My wife and I actually just went out there for fun to see, because I had been wanting to look at the inside of one of them and it was, they were very big. I, I don't know what I would do with three and four living rooms, but it's interesting.
My house is so tiny that I'm just like thinking even like a three thousand square foot home. That's like three of my houses.
You, you look at that average size of thirty-four, forty-five or whatever it was, I'm going, holy smokes.
How long do you think it takes to clean it? I know, that's what I'm looking at.
Those people who have that house, hire somebody.
What would you say, well, what happens with the common spaces in a, in this? So if, if you're looking at a development that has these different types of lots, is there any new regulations put on the common spaces? It's kind of addressed in that cottage.
Yeah, I, I think it depends on the building type that's required. But I think that what you would want to do in, in concert with this is, there's actually a whole chapter about subdivisions and the different types of roads. I think you would want to have a minimum open space standard per unit for a subdivision. And so you would adopt that as part of your subdivision design standards to say that, you know, you need five hundred square feet of open space per house within a subdivision. Or you need to provide this many pocket parks per hundred houses or whatever the numbers might be. I think you do need standards still for those, those things and to provide those amenities. So Driggs Idaho, you can see this is in a valley between a national forest and a national park. But it's a very small town. They have a little, this computer doesn't go quite as fast as I'd like. It's, you know, it's a small town. They've got a small rural airport. I'm going to go to Google Maps instead here because I'm not quite sure about the Bing Maps. What was the name of the other town there? Do you remember?
I can look it up.
When you turn on the satellite, I mean, this is, they got a little Main Street. They do have this whole master planning area going in here. So you can see this is like very traditional neighborhood looking development with, it's like some kind of common park space, you know, new houses going in. Let's see if I can go to Street View. It only lets me see Main Street. But yeah, Driggs Idaho, small town, Mountain West. Fairly spread out. But clearly development is happening.
Is that the Teton Valley, Driggs Idaho?
Yeah, that's.
Same thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. This, this thing is open on Street View. See, it looks like they're, they're getting ready to develop all kinds of things here. That looks like a new city hall or something.
So Nick, how did this come to your attention and, and did this, did this seem like the best, the best way to encourage different types of development and, and smaller homes and cottages and townhomes?
So a colleague shared it with me and, you know, I, they knew that I had been looking at overhauling our zoning code and said, you need to look at this example. This is the greatest thing that I've ever seen. And it took me a little time to go through it. And at first I thought, you know what, there are like three chapters of this that I really like and can use. And the more and more that I studied it, the more I saw how it worked and really kind of learned, learned how it functioned. And I think it's probably the best code that I've ever seen.
And do you think developers, I mean, because it's, it's so different from current, current zoning for so many other municipalities. So do you see that developers would be able to mold to the, the changes?
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think there's a couple of questions that you would want to ask yourself, either if you already own land or if you're wanting to develop something. It would be, it would be what type of use do I want to establish? What kind of building, or in, in what kind of building do I want to establish it? Because the, the building types will say, this building type is permitted in these zones. And then the use table says the use is permitted in these zones. And you can pretty quickly narrow down where what you want to do is allowed and what, where that type of building would be allowed. So if you want to open a gas station, you know, there, they have a auto oriented commercial zone that, that basically says that gas stations are permitted here. And the building type up for a gas station is considered a, just a general building. But let me, I'm going to open a couple of these chapters. First of all, their, their use table, and you're going to love how color coordinated everything is if it, if it'll show up here. How do I hide this? Sorry, this is not my computer. I don't know it quite as well. So in their, their use table, all the zone colors on their map appear in their zoning table and
Not like it looks on the screen.
Yeah, not, it is, the colors don't come through very well on the projector. But the first block here is all of the residential uses. Then you get into the public uses. In all, it's about four pages of uses that are listed compared to ours, which is like twenty pages of, of table where we have hundreds of footnotes throughout the tables saying that, oh, this is allowed here, but, you know, this is a special provision. And it, it ends up being very messy, whereas I think this is, is fairly clean. When I go back here and then pull up the building types, I showed you a few of these in the presentation. They list the, the seventeen building types here. So this says detached house and it has the zones in which the detached house is allowed, which is the agricultural zones. And then R sixteen, R seven, R five, R three, RM one, RM two, and then NX, which is their neighborhood mixed use. And it, it does this for each of the different building types, all the way down to, you know, apartment buildings, which are allowed in two of the zone, zones, live work units, shop front houses, single story shop front, mixed use shop front, and then a general building. And then it gives, it gives you further details on each of these uses, which I showed you this. Let me find one that I haven't shared. Let's look at the duplex. So the duplex, they, they break it into duplexes that are side by side and front to back because they have different lot width and lot depth and area requirements in, in terms of how the driveways work. So the side, the side by side duplex, there's a couple of pictures showing what they look like. It's a building type that accommodates two dwelling units on an individual lot separated vertically, side to side that share a common wall. Again, it's the dis- the districts where it's allowed. And then it talks about the placement and the height and form. And that's pretty much everything you need to know about it, a side to side duplex. It's all in, it's all in one place. And you, if you've identified what zone it's allowed, you can find everything on one. If you want the pictures, you need to, you need to print two sheets, but most of the information is all on one page.
Is that how you're going to set ours up?
I would love to. I don't think our code publishing company could do it. The only way that we could do this is if we either, well, we would have to adopt the zoning portion by reference and have it as a separate document. And then we'd have to hire a graphic designer to, to make it look like this. But I think most of the information, I mean, I've able, I'm able to capture most of the images, the figures, and I'm trying to structure it as much like this as I can.
This is really nice.
Yeah, so they, you know, they have, let me go a little bit further down to some of the commercial stuff.
Just so streamlined.
So this is, this is the live work unit. And so a building type that accommodates three or more units, they allow for residential and non-residential uses in the same physical space. And this is good because what happens a lot of times is when you want somebody to build a mixed use building, typically they're able to lease up all the apartments, but there's not enough critical mass to bring a business in. And it can take years for those spaces to fill up. And by creating live work units, you allow the units to, to initially be residential, but they could always be converted to a storefront later.
Is that what that thing is downtown? The skate shop? Is that kind of what that? Is that kind of what that is? Live upstairs and-
Well, this, this you would actually live on the ground floor. You could have, you could occupy both floors. But this is also great for somebody if you're, you know, if you're, if you run a salon and you're just a one-person shop, you could set up your salon downstairs with a storefront, and you can live in the back half and upstairs and run your business and live in the, the same space.
So this is three units, not six?
That one, I'm guessing those are two-story units, and that's three units, where they have, they're probably mostly living upstairs with a storefront downstairs.
So then that right there is like the skateboard shop?
Or like Sue Ann's church?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so that's an, you know, one of the building types that our code doesn't even consider. They have shop, what's called a shop-front house, and this, um, there's a lot of these if you go into the neighborhoods in Portland and southeast Portland on Burnside, where they have, you know, these two-story buildings, and there's bookstores on the ground floor and the, you know, but it was maybe once an old house. And so this is another building type that we really haven't envisioned in our code. And I think actually, when you think about what the Tremont regulations, what their goal said versus what the regulations actually said, I think the regulations wanted things like this, in terms of, this is the vision and goal for Tremont, but then the regulations gave something totally different. And so, you know, potentially on your commercial corridors where you have nice landscaping, these are the types of, of uses that would really activate a neighborhood. Then you get into si- single-story shop-front, and so this is like your, your one-story shopping center where you don't have mixed use. And so those are allowed in, in specific zones, and then you get to, um, your mixed-use shop-front, which is a multi-story, you know, the ground floor is all commercial, not live-work, but, you know, purely commercial space, and then you can live or, or have offices above. And then you get to the general building, which is a multi-story office-type building or, or commercial or even industrial building. And so it's just a general building that accommodates commercial office or industrial uses, and that is allowed in, in other, you know, different parts of the city as well. I think there was an apartment. And then once, you know, I mentioned that there were awning and canopy standards, and so this code then gets into when you're allowed to have those sorts of things, how deep they can be, and, um, talks about porches versus stoops.
Versus what?
A stoop.
What's that?
Small porch.
It's like a thick soup.
Good place to, it's a good place to sit and watch people when you're in college, just people watch.
A stoop is usually like a, a secondary entrance, like your, your back door, your side door, it's got just a little place connected to your stairs coming down, it's not your porch.
Okay.
Based on my grandma's house.
And I, and I think more like, in New York, you have brownstones, and you just have this uncovered stairs that come right down to the sidewalk and-
That's a stoop.
Yeah. So then, um, yeah, there's all kinds of other standards that are, that are included in this, but, um, I think it's, it's a really good start for Port Orchard towards modernizing our code and hopefully achieving some of the goals in our comprehensive plan. So I would encourage you to, to flip through that if you'd like. We are, we are deviating from this and maybe going above and beyond in some areas. They, they treat all detached, single-family houses the same. I'd really like to look at stratifying the, based on garage configuration and saying that each one of these is a different building type and they have different lot standards, so that when somebody builds a subdivision, if they have a two thousand square foot lot or a three thousand square foot lot, they're not trying to put a, a three-car garage on that lot, they're, they're limited in terms of, of what type of single-family house they can put there. So, that's all I've got for you.
Okay. All right. So, um, we're to the minutes. Approval of the February six minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February. Where is it?
All those in favor? All those opposed? Guys have anything else, any other question, or? So I have just, um, one quick thing. So I just am kind of, would like to know if everybody, when you get your packet, do you, do you have enough time to go through it, where you think that you've had enough time?
I find it a little short, myself. I, um, don't go, I get it set in my mailbox, because it's more secure than my drive mailbox. And I don't go to that box every single day, so there may be another day delay for me to get it.
Yeah, I don't, there's, so, I mean, sometimes there seems to be more time than others. And it depends if the packet's small, like this time, it was, it was okay, but we're allowing it to, usually.
If there's any possible way we could, we could have more time, and I know you guys are restricted by, by time as well, but if it could benefit us to be able to more thoroughly go through this, if we had a little more time.
And we, we did listen when you asked a couple of months ago for a week, and so we have been getting them out a week ahead. Usually, we were sending them out either Thursday or Friday before the meeting. But do you all feel that a week is not sufficient also? Because they're-
I got mine on Thursday.
I think I got mine Friday.
I mailed them Tuesday morning.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, last, last month and the month before, I mailed them Tuesday morning.
Because I've gotten them both on Thursday, I think the one before was on Friday.
Wow, where does stuff go? It goes in the mail here. Tacoma comes back, I don't know.
Tacoma first.
They used to deliver them by hand, which I know that takes a lot of times too, but I don't know, if like, if they're done on Tuesday, can we, is there any way to send them out?
Stop by and grab it?
Yeah, or, yeah, or stop by, or?
Yeah, I drive past City Hall, especially with the Tremont stuff going on, I drive downtown a lot more frequently than I used to.
Yeah, can do that. Um, and I think also, if, you know, if we do something like when we sent out, you know, the zoning code last year, or the design standards, I mean, I think certainly those can be driven around, just doesn't matter of course, because that is a lot for anyone to look at in a week or two weeks. So, yeah.
I, I think if each of you can let, can email Carrie and let her know your progress for whether you want to pick it up, whether you want it mailed, and if, if some of you need it delivered, we can probably deliver them. I mean, it, it does take a few hours to, or if you're actually pretty big when you're cracking around all parts of the city.
But that's okay, you guys are not that many people, so that's fine, if that's what you need.
What happened, what would be, would it be okay, like if they're done, if you just send a group email saying that they're done? And then we just-
Email?
Well, we're not responding all.
I still can't access my city account.
No, not the city, our, our real, our-
Oh, okay.
Because I can't get in the city either.
Okay.
I will do that. I, I will, if you want, I'll just start telling everybody packets are ready. Um, they're, how about, they're going to be dropped in the mail by X o'clock if you don't tell me, you know?
If we don't come get it?
Yeah, basically, yeah. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. Not, not a problem.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie.
I've been, I've been trying to get them out now on Tuesday morning. Our mail is usually picked up from City Hall around noon. Um, but if it's not getting to people until Thursday or Friday, that's a problem. So we'll do what we need to do to correct that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, um, guess we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good month.
And, and could you please, um, make sure that you sign all the minutes in there? It's like a whole pile of them.
All of these?
In the, in the orange folder? Yeah, please. Yeah. Because it's like several months, and it was pointed out to me that we had some that were blank.
Okay.
Going back even into last year.
Okay, I will. Yeah. Nick, what's going in the old Taco Bell? Do you know?
I heard a comment that they were just fixing it up because they didn't think that a developer had purchased it, it looked like a public.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of work on it.
I don't know that, but I think the fire market's almost done.
Yeah, I heard that.
That's nice.
So just so you know, the, uh, when you call an executive session, RCW, and you're, you're required to stay pursuant to RCW this, I don't know, executive session, and this is, you know, about, and so, um, if you ever are interested-